The first item is Call to Order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, held April 7th, 2015 at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers Building. Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Ilinski.
Here.
Councilmember Howagie.
Here.
Councilmember Garrison.
Present.
Vice Mayor Pfeifer.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Councilmember Pratt is absent.
All right. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Keegan Arnold to say the pledge. Would you all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'd like to share a little bit of information about yourself, and please come up to the podium and help us out.
Hi, everybody. My name's Keegan, and I'm with Buena Vista Children's Services. We're here because this month is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and so we're here to raise awareness. And a little bit later, Mayor Jones is actually going to present us the proclamation, you know, to proclaim that this month is Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have an event going on April 18th at the Civic Center in Old Town Cottonwood. It's going to be a resource fair, so it'll be a lot of carnival-themed games, and fun prizes, and activities for children to do. The parents can come and check out all the different resources that are available to Cottonwood and the Verde Valley area. So right now, I think we have about 20 vendors that are going to come out and represent different programs within the area, so we're excited about that.
Great. So April 18th, from 9:00 AM till?
1:30.
1:30.
Yep. And there's information on the back table. There's flyers, and then a fact sheet as well.
Okay, and it'll be right over at the Civic Center, as you said, so, okay, great. I have a certificate for you, but I can just, would you like me to give that, give it to you all at the same time? All right. Okay, the next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary, unless a specific item is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartasch.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, as you've probably noticed, the Civic Center parking lot has been paved in stripe. We'll be opening that up soon. We probably need a couple weeks before we get the lights in. Those are still on order. The, there's a job fair, April 8th, up at Yavapai College. In our CAT transit system, we'll be providing free passes to those who want to go up and participate in the job fair. We had approximately 2,000 people attend in the Easter egg hunt last weekend, probably about 800 to 900 children, and that event continues to grow. The Mickelson Marathon is on April 18th. That's a Saturday, and we've already got the signs up, if you'll notice, advertising that some of the roadways will be closed for that event. We had 297 citizens participate at the library in the SciTech event.
2,000?
297.
Oh, 200. 297, almost 300.
So I think that was one of the best-attended SciTech events.
And it was so much fun. They had so many exciting, neat things to see and do.
And then just an update on our officer that was recently shot. They finally removed the bullet the other day, and, from his thigh, and he's recovering at home and doing much better. And tomorrow at 1:00, we'll be recognizing the civilians who helped us with that event, who actually put their life on the line to come in and help the officers, and that'll be at 1:00 at the Cottonwood Recreation Center tomorrow.
And citizens are invited, and residents, and hope that people will come and, and help us acknowledge some heroes in our community.
Absolutely.
Councilmembers. Well, it was really a week of running with the SciTech Festival. I made most everything in cottonwood. I didn't make it to Camp Verde or Beaver Creek this year. I had other things going on, but I sure would have liked to have made it to all of them, but there was just so much happening. But of course, one of the main things at my house was the steam engine show, you know, because my husband has, works on tractors all year for the tractor pull, so that's done now, so I have my husband back. And the first SciTech event started with Verbno, Verde River Valley Nature Organization. I'm on their board, and it was held at Dead Horse Ranch State Park. And then I went to the Verde Valley Medical Center, and this was the kickoff day, and that was one amazing event. We got to go into the operating room and see, the doctors were in there, the doctors that habitate those rooms generally, to show. And there were just lots of little kids that, you know, I can imagine them thinking, oh, maybe I'll be a doctor or a nurse when I grow up. And those are some of the jobs that we have that are related to STEM and STEAM in the Verde Valley. City Manager mentioned the library and our utilities department. They had a great presentation, a light attendance, though, which was disappointing. And then our police and fire departments also had an event. The county did. I mean, I just couldn't list them all. There were so many, but it was an amazing week. On March 28th, we had the March a Mile for Meals, and the Vice Mayor was there for that event also. The Little League season started that day, and I want to thank Chief Fanning for pitching in. I was double booked, and, and he helped out and did the first pitch, and I totally apologize, and I was really, I couldn't believe. Sometimes I just get two things on my calendar at once, and it happens. There was a groundbreaking at the St. Joseph School at the Catholic Church, so we're really excited about that project. We had the Welcome Home Vietnam Vets Day in Clarkdale, and then the city manager and I drove over to Sedona to meet with Senator Flake and some other mayors and councilpeople on the 31st. And this week for Inside, or this month for Inside Cottonwood, I interviewed Rick Miller and Dr. Paul Ty for the Kids at Hope topic. So hopefully you can, you can get on YouTube and type in Inside Cottonwood, and the show should pop up. Richard Faust hosts a show, and the city manager also hosts a show. And I think their topic was the Brian Mickelson Run, this, for this month, and I don't know what yours was.
My Inside Cottonwood was on the Fallen Heroes Golf Tournament, which is scheduled for April 25th.
April 25th, okay. And that earns money for the 100 Club?
100 Club.
Okay, the 100 Club, which helps fallen firefighters and police officers and their families. Is it fallen, or is it injured also?
Injured, yeah. They'll come in for both injured officers, and I think they raised $9,300 last year.
Wow.
So they're hoping to raise $10,000 this year.
That's wonderful. You know, it just goes to show that our employees are so dedicated to the community, so we appreciate them. Oh, and then you probably all heard about the laughter demonstration. We had Dr. Laura Smokey Rain, who believes that laughter can change a community, and I agree with her, so several people, Councilmember Pratt was there. We demonstrated and tried to get people to laugh as they were driving by. The Rising Hope Food Pantry and Habitat for Humanity both had open houses today, which I wasn't able to attend, but I do want to give a call-out to them and, and the good things that they do in the community. Today, I attended the Morrison Institute Forum, which included Senator Flake at the New Kyle Water, what is the name of it? It's the Morrison Institute, and they've named it the Kyle Water Institute. And we learned about the importance of the salt in the Verde water storage reservoirs, and something I wasn't quite aware of that is that the Verde furnishes as much water as the salt does. Today, they said it was about equal. So I thought probably the salt had more water than the Verde, but not according to today. We talked about the impacts of wildfires on the water supply, because when there's a forest fire, it can often bring the salt, and then it impacts the amount of water that the reservoirs can hold. And what happens is the Forest Service gets a certain budget, but they end up spending it all on fighting fires, and so they don't get to do any, have funds left over to do the programs. Have a little friend. I shouldn't kill him, huh? I didn't.
Don't blame on me.
Oh, he went that away. Probably be back saying hi to me pretty soon.
I'll put a leash on him.
A leash, a little bug leash. We also talked about Arizona projects to improve forest and watershed health, and strategies to ensure maximum reservoir longevity. And panelists included Tom Butts, who's the Arizona Department of Water Resources Director, the new one appointed by Governor Ducey, Dave Roberts, Senior Director of Water Resources for SRP, Bruce Hamlin, Director of Water Resources. And contracts from SRP, who knows a lot about the forest and is responsible for some of those programs, and Rob Marshall, Director of the Arizona Nature Conservancy, Center for Science and Public Policy. And then Cottonwood's been in the news quite a bit lately for awards that we, we have received, a lot of them for conservation and sustainability. But we recently were recognized as being, having the artist, the Governor's Art Artist of the Year. And William Eaton, we're losing our fire guys. Hope they can come back. We might have to postpone the item until they get back. How long will it take? We don't know. Okay. So William Eaton won, from the Old Town Center for the Arts, won the Governor's Art Award, and we're just very, very proud that he was recognized. And he, he makes stringed instruments, he writes songs, he's been nominated for four or five Grammys. So, and he also has the Robert Venn School of Lutheries. Did I say that right? It's, they make guitars.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Jesse. So we're very proud, and I guess I'd like to get that on the agenda, to have William in, if staff could write that down, so he could be recognized for his accomplishments and for winning that wonderful award. And that's my report for this week. Moving on to the next item is introduction of new employees. And we have a couple. We have Megan Brush and, and Kristi Wiest, if I said that right, but they'll correct me if it's wrong. And we have Commander Isinga to make the presentation and introduce them.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, happy to introduce our two newest employees to the Communications Center. Will be coming to you in a week or two, and asking for several more. That's another story. So we've got Megan Brush. She's, she joined Cottonwood Police Department as a Communication Specialist on March 10th. She has prior public safety experience in working as a detention officer with the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office. Originally from Bakersfield, California, she has family there. She has two horses, an adoberman. She likes to hunt, ride horses, and basically stay active. She enjoys the nearby hiking trails, creeks, and views of Sedona's stunning red rocks, and although she is new to the Cottonwood area, she was crowned as the Queen of the 2014 Miss Prescott Frontier Rodeo Days. Megan's looking forward to her new career with us, and she's going to be a great addition to our team. And then we also have Kristi Wiest. Kristi joined the Cottonwood Police Department as a COM Specialist on March 30th, and before starting her career in public safety communications, she was a team leader for American Express. She's from Phoenix and has family here in the Verde Valley. She also has a nephew that works for the police department. Kristi's the mother of two daughters, ages 14 and 20. She describes them as very artistic. She has a wonderful husband who can fix anything, and she shares her home with three dogs, Bam Bam, a rescue dog Pebbles, and her daughter's dog, she's babysitting her daughter's dog, Billie.
Indefinitely.
Yeah, that's how it usually ends up. Kristi enjoys watching movies.
The permanent doggy grandma, huh?
Watching movies, swimming, and spending time with the family and friends. She really enjoys the people here, the views, and of course, the family that she has here. She's a great addition to our team as well, and she has a real talent for connecting with people, and that will serve her well as a Communication Specialist for us.
Okay. Kyla, do you have your phone? I did not remember a camera tonight. Would the city manager like to come up and?
Get a picture?
Get a picture, and? With Commander, with the Commander.
All right.
Great. It's wonderful to have you all.
Sure.
A little closer. Scrunch up. So if anybody has any comments, if either Megan or Kristi have any comments, they're welcome to share them, but you can be shy. So I understand. Thank you all, and thanks, Marie. So we hope that you, we know that you'll do a wonderful job serving the citizens of Cottonwood, and we're excited to have you on, on our team. Proclamations, okay, we'll start off. I think we have five tonight. It's just a busy time of the year. Declaring the month of April as Autism Awareness Day Month, and April 30th, 2015, is Autism Awareness Day. And we have Jade Gable, the Executive, Executive Director, here with us tonight. And this is for Rusty's Morning Star Ranch. Whereas Rusty's Morning Star Ranch was founded 29 years ago by a family seeking help with raising an autistic adult son, and whom dedicated their lives to raising awareness of adult autism issues. And whereas, from its inception forward, Autism Awareness Month has occurred nationally every April with individual local day celebrations held during that month. And whereas, Autism Awareness Month is a celebration of understanding, respecting, and educating our communities about the unique and special needs of the autistic individual, thorough greater knowledge and understanding. And whereas, Rusty's Morning Star Ranch has chosen Cottonwood, Arizona, to officially launch their local efforts. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of Cottonwood, Arizona, on behalf of Rusty's Morning Star Ranch and adults with autism in the Verde Valley, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Autism Awareness Month, and Thursday, April 30th, 2015, as Autism Awareness Day in Cottonwood. And witness whereof, I have set my hand to be affixed this 7th day of April. So, Mr. Dowling, if you'd like to come up, and I think each councilmember can have a turn, if you would like to give the proclamation. And please come on up.
I like the voices.
Thank you for all you do for very special people.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And I'd like to invite you all to the Verde Valley Church of the Nazarene on Highway 260. They're serving lunch with friends on Saturday, April 18th, and from 11 to 2, homemade soups and Navajo tacos.
All right. Okay, April 18th.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, the next one is Designating April 2015 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And tonight, we have Keegan Arnold, Keegan, Keegan Arnold, Event Coordinator for Buena Vista. And we also have Ms. Erin Mayberry here tonight, the Executive Director of Buena Vista Children's Services, for how many years now?
Six.
Six, and then before that, you worked?
I think I've been doing this for 20 years.
Okay. Whereas Buena Vista's Children's Services, Inc., has held a successful children's celebration event annually for 22 years in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. You may have been, been in a business for 23 years. Right. Whereas Buena Vista Children's Services, Inc., continues to offer child abuse prevention awareness, children's advocacy, childcare, education, and professional development to the Verde Valley, as well as all of Yavapai County, Apache, and Navajo Counties as well. Whereas Buena Vista Children's Services, Inc., is a community-based grassroots nonprofit organization that fosters innovative programs and leadership to enhance the quality of life for our children throughout the region. And whereas, many community members are unaware of the child abuse prevention awareness and children's advocacy services offered by Buena Vista Children's Services, despite the organization's very long history. And whereas, there is a critical need to educate and support individuals and families by designing, developing, and implementing model programs for children, parents, and educators to address emerging needs in the areas, areas of child abuse prevention, childcare, education, and parenting. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, hereby designate April 2015 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, during which parents, educators, the general public, and other children's advocates across the socioeconomic range can learn more about the services offered by Buena Vista Children's Service, including child abuse prevention awareness. We encourage our citizens of all ages to join with Buena Vista Children's Services to celebrate Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month while having fun at the 22nd Annual Children's Celebration. We hope that all of our citizens will recognize that child advocacy helps prepare our children as future community leaders. Mr. Ilinski?
So we wanted to present you with this certificate of thanks for being a leader and saying the pledge. And we'd also like to present the proclamation. Mr. Ilinski, Councilmember Ilinski will do that.
Get that smile, get that smile back on. Thank you very much for being here tonight, and all you do for children.
Thank you.
Our greatest asset in our community. Okay, proclamation, proclaiming April 2015 as Go Blue for CASA. Is Lisa Richards here tonight? There you are, okay. You're back in the back row. First of all, I'd just like to say that Lisa does an amazing job with, with CASA. CASA, I always, CASA. Would you like to share a little bit of information, if there's something that's not in the proclamation?
Well, one thing that I think is wonderful is the proclamation that you just gave, because it really is a national proclamation for the entire nation. This is Child Abuse Prevention Month. It's Child Abuse Prevention Month. So that's why I'm here. I represent the board, which again is a 501, 3C, whatever, nonprofit, and was created to help the dependent children who are under court jurisdiction. So any child that's been removed from their home, whether they're 16, or they're three months, or whatever, is under court, words of the court. And our, what we are created for is to help with unmet And what we are created for is to help with unmet needs. And I'm sure, as many of you know, funding has been cut all over for these children throughout the state, and they grow. So one of the biggest needs is clothing. You know, their allowance is used up, and then there's nothing for clothing. Clothing, tutoring, sports equipment, anything to try and help them lead as normal a life as possible. And we're a small board. It is a national organization, and we are a part of that. But the Verdi Valley is a very small board, and we just do this, we can get recommendations or requests from either their CASA, which is Court Appointed Special Advocate, which are volunteers. And they're always looking for volunteers with these children. I have been one for years, and then I joined the board about nine years ago. And I am currently the President of the Board. But while I have this microphone, I would personally like to thank Mayor Diane Jones and the City Council for all of the support they have given me during my 10 years as President. It has been absolutely wonderful. Cottonwood has been wonderful. So I do thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome, and we want to thank you for your time that you've dedicated, hours and hours and hours to specific children and youth, as well as being on the board. So we appreciate you too. Okay, so we're ready to read the proclamation. Whereas, the National CASA Court Appointed Special Advocate Association is a network of 955 programs that are recruiting, training, and supporting volunteers. Did you hear that, everyone? Volunteers? Okay. To represent the best interests of abused and neglected children in the courtroom and other settings. And whereas, CASA volunteers are appointed by judges to watch over and advocate for abused and neglected children, to make sure they don't get lost in the overburdened legal and social service systems, or languish in inappropriate group or foster homes. And whereas, the Verdi Valley CASA Children's Foundation, a member of the National CASA Association, a nonprofit 501(c)(3), was created in 2006 to provide financial assistance for the unmet needs of children of our Greater Verdi Valley. It's about us, here in the Verdi Valley, who are wards of the court. And whereas, the mission statement of the Verdi Valley CASA Children's Foundation reads, "To enhance the quality of life for dependent children under court supervision in the Greater Verdi Valley." And whereas, at this time, there are approximately more than 100 children in the Greater Verdi Valley that have been removed from their homes and are currently wards of the court. More than that now, so more than 100 children.
We're up to, I'm sure they're about 120 now.
About 120 this year. They've been removed from their homes, and they're currently wards of the court. Whereas, independent research has demonstrated that children with a CASA volunteer have substantially, are substantially less likely to spend time in long-term foster care, and less likely to re-enter care. And whereas, the color blue is the national color representing abused and/or neglected children. And whereas, the month of April has been declared Go Blue for CASA Month in the Greater Verdi Valley. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Go Blue for CASA Month in the City of Cottonwood. And vice mayor? Eyes open. Thank you. So we have Marie Carpenter, our very own Marie Carpenter with us, to accept the next proclamation. So do you want to share a little bit of information with us, or will we hear all about it in the proclamation?
I'll just say that National Public Safety Telecommunicator Appreciation Week is celebrated nationally, where it recognizes dispatchers as the first, first responder. Often, dispatchers go unnoticed, and they're an important role in the chain of survival, in the response of our firefighters and paramedics and law enforcement officers. And it's also a time where we bring out the 911 education materials and educate our public on the use of 911 and the services that are available to them.
Fantastic. Okay, proclamation. Whereas, emergency services can occur at any time, requiring Sheriff, Police, Fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and deputy sheriffs is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Cottonwood Public Safety Communication Center. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our law enforcement and fire personnel by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety dispatchers of the Cottonwood Public Safety Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, hereby proclaim the week of April 12th through 18th, 2015, as National Public Safety Telecommunication Week, and join in honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe. Councilmember Garrison? As a city council, this is the best part of our jobs, when we get to recognize members of our community for the great things that they do. So we have one more proclamation. And this one is Stand Up for Transportation Day. And I think, is Bruce Morrow here to accept this proclamation? Okay. Whereas, April 9th, 2015 marks the Stand Up for Transportation Day, a national transportation infrastructure day that highlights the critical need to invest in updating our nation's transportation infrastructure. And whereas, transportation is the economic backbone of our nation's economy, and public transportation is an important part of our nation's transportation system. Federal funding for public transportation infrastructure needs to increase, and Congress needs to pass a long-term multimodal transportation bill by May 31st, 2015. And whereas, public transportation is a proven catalyst for economic growth, since for every dollar invested in public transportation, four dollars in economic returns is generated locally, creating economically vibrant and prosperous communities. And whereas, public transportation offers millions of Americans access to economic opportunities, since nearly 60% of the trips taken on public transportation are for work commutes. And whereas, Stand Up for Transportation Day will be celebrated in small, medium, and large communities across the United States as a day that highlights the critical need for funding transportation infrastructure, both public transportation and highway infrastructure. And whereas, the City of Cottonwood believes that quality public transportation services are essential for the economic prosperity of our country, our community, and for individuals. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, proclaim April 9th, 2015, as Stand Up for Transportation Day in the City of Cottonwood, and will join with public transportation agencies and businesses across the country to acknowledge greater federal investment in public transportation infrastructure. And Mr. Morrow, would you like to make any more comments, or does this pretty much cover?
It pretty much covers it, I'll be talking a little bit later.
Yes, you will. So if you'd like to come up and accept this, Councilmember Hauda'ke, do you want to make the presentation to...
Thank you for all you do. You've made a huge difference in our system. We appreciate you.
Now we have Employee of the Quarter. And we lost, we lost our brothers, or his brothers, and... You want to, you want to wait a while on this, or go ahead? So we have our Employee of the Quarter, and it's an award for the first quarter of 2015, and it's Ben Kramer, firefighter EMT. And Chief Kirkendall will let us know why he's up here tonight.
Madam Mayor, Council, it's my pleasure to, tonight, to acknowledge and the work that Ben has done that's caused him to be not only nominated, but selected as Employee of the Quarter. In fact, before we start, he was nominated by his captain, Captain Wills, who did a wonderful job of putting onto paper all the things that...
It was quite detailed and very excellent.
You guys have had it in your packets, so I'm going to kind of hit some of the high points. One of the things that Ben has done is using his knowledge of computers and his mathematical knowledge, he's been able to compile information for our communication center. One of the things the communication center, to meet national standards, they have to dispatch us in a certain time period. Ben has been able to take, using our records management system, and glean the information from that to keep us up on what our, on tracking, how we're doing and how our dispatchers are performing in the amount of time until they get to dispatch. And we've seen that, not only that, credit to the communication center also is, their dispatch times have been decreased, which is better significantly, as we've watched over the last year since we've been, not even quite a year, that they've been in the communication center here. He's also used that, also his ability using to extrapolate and present data in a usable form, which has helped me in completing our training data for our annual report to the city. He also did, it was instrumental in our ISO grading that we had a couple of years ago, in getting all of that information.
And why don't you explain that a little bit? I don't think people always know what that means, and it's so important.
That was our rating, our insurance services organization, our office rating, that they rate our city based upon our abilities to provide fire protection to the community, and they grade communications, they grade the fire department, they grade our water system. And we had, our rating increased, or got better from a four to a two. The one is the best that you can get. And since, at the time, we got a two, we were just one of eight communities in the city to have it, or eight cities in Arizona to have a two rating.
I know, that's awesome.
Since then, a city did get a one, I'm not going to...
Okay.
Sun City West, well, we won't get into that.
And that means that people's insurance generally...
It means your insurance rates go down, depending on residential and commercial. But Ben compiled so much of that information, it wasn't in this thing, but I want to acknowledge the work that he did on that, which was very useful to us. Ben's also a certified car seat technician and an instructor for other technicians. He's very active in this, he's coordinating both with us in trying to get grants and otherwise other means to come up with car seats to install in the cars of those in our community, whether, especially those who are financially unable to purchase car seats. He also coordinates with Verdi Valley Fire and other fire agencies to, when anyone is able to get car seats, to coordinate, usually we try to share when we get those. If one gets them, we kind of share them, so they spread throughout the valley. And in fact, in that same vein, he just taught a class on very short notice over at the ambulance company on how to utilize car seats. Something you won't think about is you've got car seats, but you have to transport children in an approved car seat, even in the back of an ambulance.
Wow, I didn't realize that.
Have to be secured properly in the ambulance, and it's, and making sure that that's done. He is able to do that, and again, it's a service we provide to the community, and he provides the community. One other thing he did, he, our burn permit system had always been done on paper. He has taken and got it now to where everything's on the computer, and we're able to share that directly with the communication center, who gets the calls on people doing burn permits. And it streamlined our system greatly. And last but not least, well, not, two more things. If those who don't know, Ben is a partner in the Old Town Frame Shop. And as, in the last few months, he took it upon himself and did framing of the large three-foot-by-four-foot maps that we have in there for the communication center, for us, the fire department, and for Verdi Valley Fire, and provided them, and provided those services to us.
Thank you.
At no cost.
Thank you.
Donating those things. And last, besides the things that he does for us here in Cottonwood, as a Clarkdale resident, he also serves on the Clarkdale Library Board, the Clarkdale Police Public Safety Retirement Board, and he also is on the Cottonwood Salvation Army Board. So he does so many things for our community, and again, well-deserving of this award.
Fantastic.
I'd like to thank the mayor and councilmembers for this recognition. I'm very lucky to have a great job I enjoy very much. At the fire department, we receive overwhelming support, both internally and from the other departments in the city, and from the city management. Both my captain, Tim Wills, and Chief Kirkendall work hard to foster a culture of community outreach and personal development within the fire department. Our public safety partners at the police department and dispatch are great to work with, and we have a strong team for the city. Together, we're all proud to be... Together, we're all proud to be in the service of the citizens of Cottonwood. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. So we actually have a little something for you. So Council, you wanna come up and do this? And city manager? And who else should be with you? Oh, definitely Captain Wills.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. So, on behalf of the city council, we would like to give you this plaque. Councilmember, Councilmember Howdegie, okay? You're welcome. I thought you'd think that it's a ring. Just goes to show what a fine team we have in the City of Cottonwood. When our citizen calls, we're there for them. We're very blessed to have such fine folks working on our team. Okay, the next item is called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that's not on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to talk about something not on the agenda tonight? If not, we'll close the floor to the public.
I think everything is on the agenda, so there's nothing-
There could be nothing else, I know. It's so long. Okay, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 17th, 2015. I turned in a couple of things to the staff today. They were just minor typographical kinds of things. So if there's, is there anything else that anybody?
It's good to me.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Boy, you're speedy tonight. So-
Every little bit helps.
Councilmember Ilinski made the motion, and Councilmember Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving none. Regular meeting, okay. So comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Consent agenda, because the agenda was so long, you might find some things on here that normally wouldn't be, but I don't look at them as controversial, and we always can have a chance to pull them off for discussion. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is award of contract for safety consulting services. Item number two is submittal of a grant application to the Yavapai County Community Foundation to assist with the upkeep of the police department's K-9 by the name of Jacks. Resolution number 2791 affirming the city's fair housing policy, making known the city's commitment to the principle of fair housing, and describing actions the city shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. Request from Sedona Verde Valley Pride for waiver of Section 912030A alcoholic beverages of the municipal code in order to serve beer at Riverfront Park for a Pride family picnic scheduled for April 25th, 2015. Item five is special event liquor license application submitted by Miranda Rae Foreman, applicant for Sedona Verde Valley Pride, for a picnic scheduled for April 25th, 2015 at Riverfront Park. Item number six is request to waive Section 912030 alcoholic beverages of the Cottonwood Municipal Code for open-air cinema events scheduled for May 9th, 2015, and June 6th, 2015 at the Old Town Activity Park. I would like to remove six, because we have Juliana Booch. She'll say her last name. I can, I can see it, but can I say it? So I'd like to pull that one, since she's here tonight. Is, are there any other items that council would like to pull or discussion? Are there any items that members of the public would like to pull or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion for items one through five.
Madam Mayor, motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through five as presented.
Second. Councilmember Howdegie made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. And thank you, Ms. Miranda, for being here tonight. We appreciate that. Okay, so Juliana, if you wanna come up and share a little bit of information about the open-air cinema events coming up.
Yes. We, we applied for a grant through Arizona Commission on the Arts, and we are doing a series of five open-air cinema events that we would like to promote the Verde Valley. And the reason we're asking for this waiver of this code is that we would like for citizens to be able to bring their own alcoholic beverages into the ballpark field. I met this morning with the temporary use permit group, and we've discussed, you know, ways to contain the alcohol consumption within the boundary of that fenced area. The police representative was not there, but we did discuss that we would have either a paid police person at both entrances that we've designated as the entrance points, so that alcohol cannot leave that area. So they recommended approval of this based upon the recommendations of the police. This, this event is being sponsored by not only the City of Cottonwood, it's being sponsored by the town of Clarkdale, and it's also being sponsored by Yavapai College. Our other partners are Old Town Center for the Arts, Local First, and of course, AZ Culture. And I am just pretty much the facilitator and organizer of the event, but our intent is that we take this event and make it a event that continues on into the fall as a community event that is free to the public. Our five movies that we have selected for this year are North by Northwest, Babe, Top Gun, Casablanca. And with the Verde Valley Wine Consortium, we are doing an event that piggybacks with theirs on May 30th, which we will feature the movie Some. After we finish this five movie season-
Extravaganza.
Yeah, the extravaganza. Our intent is to, you know, over the course of these five events, be taking audience polls to find out what movies they would like to see in the next series of events. While having, you know, wine or alcohol is maybe not critical to the event, we think that it is, that it is, not only was it included in the grant proposal, but it is something that we think is attractive to not only residents, for them to be able to come and enjoy a glass of wine while sitting out watching a movie, but also to tourists and people visiting who would like to maybe, you know, purchase a bottle of wine from one of the local wineries and then be able to go have that during the screening. I know there might be some question about trash and the potential for that, and we've also addressed that in the meeting this morning. We have a multitude of trash receptacles located around the facility, and we will also be having volunteers that come collect trash during the event. You know, if there's any trash that happens to happen to be there during the event, picking it up there, and then also after the event. So, you know, we are very aware of that. AZ Culture did the Watermelon Festival in Glendale, and that had no boundaries. And we, that's part of what we consider, you know, when we're doing a public event where there is alcohol involved. Even with policing, it coming in and out, people will sneak it out, and there will be trash out. So we understand that that would be part of the process, would be that we would also monitor the area after the event to make sure that there's not, you know, other trash that would be left after that. I don't know if, if you guys have any other questions that you have for me. I'd be happy to answer those if you have questions about the event.
What about the, I guess it's in the, in the packet? Well, now, you said that the Old Town Center for the Arts was a partner, but in the packet, I think it said the Old Town Association.
Well, the Old Town Association is all, both.
Great.
The Old Town Center for the Arts is providing live entertainment prior to the screening.
Okay, great.
And so we have five different performers that, you know, local performers that will be performing music acts. We also have, and I'm not sure if Don's here tonight, but I have never met him, but he was gonna be here to talk about including films through-
Oh, Tom Whitmer, yes, he is here.
Hi, hi, Tom. We talked on the phone.
Okay.
But part of, the other part of this is that we, we would like to promote the local filmmaking that's taking place here already. So that means that we've, we also have including Mingus Union High School students. And I know that last year that they, and I know Don will probably talk about this, they-
Tom.
Needed a plat-, yeah. They needed a platform for their short films and their contests. We would like to be, Verde Valley Open Air Cinema would like to be that free platform and family-friendly platform to, you know, for Yavapai College and for Mingus Union and for, you know, any other student films that are family-appropriate, that we could, you know, help promote those young filmmakers. So that, that's the other thing. This is a family event, so the focus really is not on the alcohol. So it's just something that we would like to be able to, you know, offer if somebody wants to bring it, but it's certainly not, it's not a critical part of this event.
Okay, questions, councilmembers?
Sounds good.
We appreciate the collaboration with our sister communities and others in the Verde Valley, and it should be a great family event, and excited about it.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah. I hope it turns out very well. Tom, did you wanna add anything at all to that discussion? You will when you, when you have your turn. Okay, we have you on the agenda here also. So, okay, any questions? So now I get down to, okay. I'm finding my place on this agenda, on this tablet.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, please do.
Move to waive Section 912030 for open-air cinema events scheduled for May 9th, 2015, and June 6th, 2015 at Old Town Activity Parks. Second.
Okay, Councilmember Garrison made the motion. Councilmember Ilinski seconded it. Are there any comments from members of the public on this item? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe trip home.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on from the consent agenda, there was a resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, in the consent, we had Resolution Number 2791. Deputy Clerk, will you please read Resolution Number 2791 by title only?
Resolution Number 2791, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, affirming a fair housing policy, making known its commitment to the principle of fair housing and describing actions it shall undertake to affirmatively further the fair housing. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, so going on to new business, the following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Resolutions Number 2785 and 2790, appointing administrative hearing officers for the city. And we have Ms. Baron Najad with us tonight to explain this item.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Municipal code provides establishment of an administrative hearing officer for the code enforcement division. And this position reviews the civil violations, code violations provided or issued by our department, code enforcement division, for the planning department again. And this officer conducts public hearings and has the ability to review all the applications and even give fines or forgive some of the violations. There are no code-mandated requirements for this position, except that city employees from the community development department cannot be served at that position. Yet, we would like to have some kind of experience through the code enforcement to have this position. The administrative hearing officer position is at-will and serves for two years. And since 2007, Ms. Linda Hobson has been serving that. City advertised this position, and five applications came. As of today, Eugene Nail, he requested withdrawing his application. He's no longer on the list. And out of five applications, we had two out-of-town, two attorneys, and the rest of them were in the area. And also, out-of-towners requested mileage request, reimbursement. And again, we have four applications in front of you and requesting two appointments for this position. I know for sure that there's one applicant here in the audience. I don't know the other person, he might be here. And this concludes my staff report, again, requesting with two appointments.
Okay. So we have two. We have Jerry, it looks like, yes, Jerry Scott is here, and Linda Hobson, our longtime hearing officer, who's done an excellent job for us. And so, is there anyone else here that has applied for this position?
I'm Charles Cruz.
Charles, okay, welcome, Charles. So I would like each one of you to come up, take a turn, and we'll start with, we'll go ahead and go down the alphabet here. And, well, no, it's not by alphabetical order. Okay, I'm going down the list of what's on my attachment. So Linda Hobson, if you would like to share some information about your work in this field and why you think you would like to continue, and how you're able to continue doing the job?
Very good. I do want to address Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Pfeifer, and all the councilmembers, and Mr. Bartosz. My name is Linda Hobson, and I have been the administrative hearing officer since 2006. In the inception of the administrative officer in that time, there was the administrative hearing officer, and then there were two alternates, in case that person was not going to be available. As looking at that, those alternates, one of them has passed, and one of them, I think, has left the area. So it kinda all came to me to be the administrative hearing officer for the City of Cottonwood, which has been my privilege to serve the residents and to serve the council. As I am doing that, I did have an opportunity to maybe leave the area for a while, and went and talked with Mr. Bartosz and said, you know, we need to come into what was the original- and talked with Mr. Bartosz and said, you know, we need to come into what was the original conception of what the administrative hearing officer was to be. So, with this, that is what I'm asking you for, is to remain as the administrative officer with an alternate person to be able to serve in that position as I am away. And again, it's been my privilege to serve the council, and it's been my privilege to serve the community of the City of Cottonwood. With the administrative hearing, we work as a team. We have worked hard to, in making it a better place. The only time people do come into the hearing is when they haven't complied. It's not a punitive thing. It is compliance, and that has been what I've thought that the council has wanted right from the beginning. So, I am asking for reappointment, and I will be back in the area in the fall.
Okay.
Okay.
And you've done an excellent job, and we appreciate you.
Well, thank you.
Very much.
May I ask one question?
Yes. Is this for Ms. Hobson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask. Do you have any questions?
That's okay.
I practiced that even. Do you have any questions?
That's all right. I'm just curious, how many hours a month do you serve?
About two. We usually have a hearing on the second and the fourth Monday. A lot of people have complied even that morning.
Right.
But some people think, ooh, I just want to be able to go in front of the officer or the judge and give my story. That may be what they want to do, but it costs them $50 to be able to tell me why it is that they should not comply. But they're willing to comply. They just want to have...
They want to hear their story told.
They want me to hear their story, and I know how to do that.
There is.
Any more questions?
Any more questions, council?
Thank you.
Any questions from members of the public for Ms. Hobson? If not, the next person on the attachment list is Jerry Scott. Ms. Scott, if you would just share with the council and members of the public, maybe your qualifications, which I read your application, and you have quite a few of them, and why you would like to serve and how you think that you'll do an excellent job serving.
First off, thank you for actually having me here. And I'm terribly nervous. I'm probably going to stutter, and I don't come across very well. I look great on paper, but in person, sometimes not so well. I do have quite a bit of experience with, as far as in the, I have been in the paralegal program at Yavapai College, as well as being on the student council. I've dealt with, worked in a few attorney's offices as well. So, I'm familiar with legal precedents and legal matters, and I understand that this is administrative and whatnot. I guess I would want to mention that I did apply for this position back in 2010. And I, as much as I would love to have this position, I feel I could be pretty fair with this. Even if Linda did manage to stay as the incumbent, I would be more than willing to accept even a position as an alternate. As far as anything else, I'm, again, not very good at this, especially being kind of nervous. So, I guess I would just leave it up to questions from anyone.
Okay, thank you. Questions, council members? Any questions? Any questions from members of the public for Ms. Scott? And I don't know that I, I mean, I wasn't reading that it's really an alternate. It's like two people serving, or do you consider it an alternate, Ms. Baron, Ms. Nijad?
In this case, it will be that way.
An alternate?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Hobson will be, if she's here, she'll be the person that's called, and if she's not here, she'll, the alternate then will be called. Okay. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And our next applicant that's here tonight is Charles Cruz. If you would come up and you had...
Thank you very much. And I want to thank also the person unknown to me who thought enough of me to submit my name to, I think it's, I still don't know who that person was. But I suppose the biggest question you folks have tonight is, is why in the world would the council consider hiring someone from Seligman to be administrative hearing officer here in Cottonwood? Well, I don't know. But in my legal experience, I've been a lawyer for over 45 years, and in that time, I've been a Maricopa County Judge Pro Tem, recently was a Seligman Justice Court, Justice of the Peace, Pro Tem, Certified Hearing Officer. Over the probably 15 years of my career, I've sponsored free legal clinics. I currently, for the last seven years, have sponsored one in Seligman where people come to me and ask for help. And before that, I did it for approximately 10 years in the town of Parker. And throughout my experience as, as a, you want to boil down my career and everything I've done since I was admitted to the state bar, is I've been a salesman, trying to sell the judges my arguments, trying to sell the clients why I think they should hire me or shouldn't hire me, and trying to sell, the hardest thing, believe it or not, is selling legal advice to people who aren't paying for it. If they're paying for it, they think, you know, it must be right. But when they come to a free legal clinic, they want to be convinced. And, and one of the most important things, I think, the hearing officer for the town of Cottonwood should do is to make these people who come before the administrative, administrative hearing officer feel that justice has been done. That takes the heat off of you folks, fewer appeals, more, if people feel that justice is being done, they know that you're doing your jobs. A key part of that, justice is not done unless that is communicated to the client or the judge or the customer who comes before the administrative hearing officer. I spent my life reading and understanding statutes, ordinances, cases, and I've spent first half of my life, and the second half of my life was explaining this to people. What I can offer you is communication to the client, in this case, the people who come before the administrative hearing officer, and communicate to them what is the basis for the decision that I'm called upon to make. Once they understand whether it's in their favor or not, they're more accepting of it. The more accepting of it they are, the more that they feel that justice has been done. And the only thing different from the other applicants that I can tell is I'm asking for mileage from Seligman to the town of Cottonwood. And that's just simply because it, at $50 an hour, it would be pretty much a negative from my standpoint to not have that compensation. And having been said, I think I can offer experience, qualifications, and justice as a hearing officer for the town of Cottonwood. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, council members? Any questions from members of the public for Mr. Cruz? Any question, any questions from members of the public? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You had an excellent application. And then we had Jett Tennant, and Jett's not here tonight. Okay, but council should consider her application. She's a local businesswoman and would also make a great hearing officer, I'm sure. So, Eugene Neal, you said that he withdrew.
He withdrew.
And have we covered everyone?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, council, any discussion? Mr. Hadigee?
We've had individuals who wanted to be reappointed usually considered for that position. And with that said, I would say that Ms. Hobson has been a very blessed, and we should consider reappointing her for this position.
I'll second that.
I agree. I guess I just kind of assumed that she would be because she has done such an excellent job, but that's not my decision, it's the council's decision. So, Mr. Hadigee made a motion.
And let me restate that.
Okay.
To approve resolution 2785 inserting the name of Linda Hobson.
Okay. And Mr. Garrison seconded it. Any more comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you.
I would, on the next consideration, Mr. Pratt got ahold of me before the meeting tonight and asked that I extend his support for Jerry Scott to the other open seat. So, I wanted to share with you his opinion.
Is that a motion? Thank you.
No, it was just to share my opinion.
Okay.
Then I'll make the motion.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I move to approve resolution number 2790, appointing Jerry Scott as administrative hearing officer alternate, or however they want to do it. Is that all right, Steve, to do it that way? Okay.
I'll second that.
So, the Vice Mayor made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it. Are there any comments from the public on this motion?
May I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I just, I appreciate that we had so many applicants for the position, and I appreciate you applying from Seligman. And I think it indicates that our community is concerned, you know, about the direction we're going, and I think it's good that we had local people that were applying, and I appreciate Jett, Jett, who's a local businesswoman applying, and I would like to support that, you know, encourage the locals to step up and serve the community.
And I think Ms. Scott has an excellent background also with her education and experience that she's done. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. And we do just want to thank Mr. Cruz and Jett Tennant for applying and for driving down today, and you have wonderful qualifications, and I'm sure you would have done a great job.
Thank you.
So, okay, so, Deputy Clerk, please read resolutions number 2785 and 2790 by title only.
Resolution number 2785, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Linda Hobson as an administrative hearing officer for the city. And resolution number 2790, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Jerry Scott as an administrative hearing officer for the city.
Okay. So, we got it covered? All right, thank you. The next item is item number two, resolution number 2792. Discussion, consideration, and possible legal action to reappoint presiding city magistrate A. Douglas Lasota to a new two-year term commencing on April 13th, 2015. Pursuant to ARS 3843103A1, the council may vote to convene into executive session, subject to the city magistrate's right to compel the council to discuss this matter in an open meeting. And we sent the judge his, the normal letter that we send at least 24 hours, and I don't think you really care whether it's in public or executive. It's whatever the council would like to do. And I think we did your last one in, in public, and so I would just suggest that everything that we're going to talk about is in the packet. So, I think just going ahead and moving forward, I don't see why we should have, have to have an executive session.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, you did share some information with us about the court's accomplishments, and they're, they're really numerous from the time that you started with the city. You've really done a lot to improve the court. You moved into a new building that's very nice, and you've been, you've watched the budget, you've been working with, you feel that you need another employee, but you've been able to survive like this, everyone in the city has with the crunch that we've experienced since 2008, and you've managed to keep swimming, as they say. And I think that it's pretty obvious here to me from reading all of your information that you've, you've done a lot of education that the council asked you to do, and you have just been really gone to a lot of training. And do you feel that that's helped in your court, is the training, do you feel that's been a benefit to everyone?
Yes, I think it's good in several areas, both as administrator and in court and dealing with staff and with other people as well.
Right.
So, it covers a lot of different areas, so it's real thorough. You know, it's the National Center for State Courts' program.
Mm-hmm.
And Arizona's one of the leading, leading states in the nation that's helped push that program, so it's been a good program.
Great. So, how, what would you like to share with us? Because we do have your packet, and we've, I guess we've all read everything.
Right, I don't need to reread anything in the packet. I just, I just came across this when I was out judging a horse show in California. This is just an indication of how the federal prosecution programs help, not just with keeping people, allowing people to make first offenses to, you know, in effect, clean their record, not have that conviction on their record that earns their jobs and that type of thing, but also helps cut down recidivism rates substantially, too. And this, this shows that, you know, San Luis Obispo County was going to that after seeing what Orange County's success rate was like. And Orange County went from a 27, 22% recidivism rate for first-time offenders to just 6%. And that's kind of similar what we're seeing here. So, that helps the community in many ways by keeping that recidivism rate down. So, that's been a successful program, both because the city gets to keep all the money, we don't have to feed it off to the state for that program, and we have these kind of benefits, as well as the fact that people that aren't going to have their job, job prospects, because they have, you know, misdemeanor on their record for something that might not have been too major an offense at the time.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like you've had a lot of accomplishments and compliments from your work with judging horse events and from your packet. And for the public's knowledge, everything that the council has is online in our packet. If there's something the public wants to know about anything we talk about tonight, it should be in the packet, and those can be looked at on cottonwoodaz.gov. So, all of the judge's information is in that packet for the public's benefit also. So, council, questions about a two-year appointment, comments?
I would see no reason to not appoint the judge for another two years. I think his performance has been, you know, exemplary. I think, I was the biggest critic of the judge, I think, in the beginning, and I think you've proven that you want to improve, and you've done so. So, I would see no reason not to appoint you.
How about members?
I appreciate earning your support over time, too. I'm glad that you're around supporting me.
And any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, I think your, the job that you've done speaks for itself, and these kinds of exchanges are getting pretty comfortable, I guess. So, I would entertain a motion then?
I would have to approve a resolution number 2792, reappointing city magistrate A. Douglas Lasota to a new two-year term commencing on April 13th, 2015.
Second. Okay, Councilmember Dallin made the motion, the Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, hang on just a second. So, we're appointing the two-year term, but merit, is that not on here, or is that something we're...
Madam Mayor, I think how, how that could be handled in council is, is you can adopt the resolution during the reappointment, and then in the, in the council packet in the communication forum, we provide it for the prerogative for the council to discuss and take action on other matters related to the judge's employment.
So, we can go ahead and do that. And I'm sorry, I'm not on the right page, and I did read my packet. I'm just looking at the agenda. So, we can handle it through just that process.
Since the staff didn't, didn't and didn't want to anticipate what the council would or wouldn't want to do.
Okay.
We sort of structured it this way.
So, I think at this point that we should talk about merit pay for the judge, and we've just reappointed him for two years. So, do I hear any comments about what council would like to do based upon the excellent report and the extra work that he's done on his schooling and... report and the extra work that he's done on his schooling and such?
I will once again share Mr. Pratt's comments that he supported renewing the judge's contract and would support an increase that's commensurate with the other employees of the city this year. And I would say the same.
Just seeing all my staff members as well, we've gotten 5% raises across the board, whatever your prerogative is.
So, staff at the court have received 5% merit pay for this particular year, considering that they are short-staffed, and they're, some of them are doing extra work because, over and above, because they are short-staffed. So, you would recommend 5%?
If that's, if that's commensurate with what we've been doing for the other employees, then I would say yes.
How many contract employees have we reviewed so far this year?
I think this, let's see, Steve's is in September, so city manager, city clerk. Yours comes up in September, though, right? August or September? So, you, and that's after the fiscal year?
So, this budget year, I think you, you've reviewed everybody with the exception of the judge.
Okay, we've got everybody for this fiscal year. Got it.
I believe 5% is, I know we gave city manager 6, I believe.
He skipped last year.
Yeah, but I believe 5% is, is fair in what we've given the other contract employees.
You agree that? Okay, so I'd entertain a motion for a 5% merit pay?
So, is this in conjunction with the resolution, or are we just making a new motion, then?
Yeah, I think the resolution is still on the table.
Okay, so should then one?
Do I need to amend my, the, that I spoke of, or no?
Hang on, I could...
No, no, if the council, no, it hasn't, the resolution hasn't been read yet, I think that was where.
Right, no, it has not.
But no, you can, you can do a, a motion related to the compensation, and then we can read the resolution.
Yeah, 'cause it says additional motions or motion language related to the terms and conditions of Judge Lasota's employment may be proposed, discussed, considered, and adopted. So, we do have a suggested motion, and to that we would add the amount of merit pay in the motion. So, I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor, do you want to?
About the...
Are you on the, the page?
No.
No, okay, so, well, I'll do it. I move to approve Resolution Number 72792, reappointing city magistrate A. Douglas Lasota to a new two-year term commencing on April 13th, 2015, and ending on the same day in 2017. And I would, I would motion that he receive a 5% merit pay raise for this year.
Second.
The ma, the mayor made the motion, the Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Does that work?
That, I, I think that's a superseding motion, but that, yes, that works.
Okay.
Any opposed? Superseded or not? The motion passes? 'Cause I don't hear any nays. So, Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2792 by title only.
Resolution Number 2792, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing A. Douglas Lasota as city magistrate and standing in his term of office. Madam Mayor.
And that goes with, even with the raise, we're okay with that?
Not a record.
Okay. Thank you very much, Judge. Keep up the good work.
Okay, I'll be back in a couple weeks, getting everybody reappointed for all their terms.
Okay, we'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you for the job that you do for our citizens. Mm-hmm. Okay, public hearing regarding the city's intent to apply for grant funding for the CAT-Links transit program through the FTA DOT Section 55311 Rural Transit Program. And we have Bruce Morrow with us. So, did you want to arrange items? Did you want someone to go before you? You're kind of like waving.
They, they wish me to keep it short.
Okay. Well, we could let them go first, too.
No.
No. No way.
I was here last, the last day.
He was here for, till the last dog died at the last meeting.
Madam Mayor, Council, this is our usual last-minute thing that we do, pursuant to ADOT regulations, public hearing, because we're going to go get the grant anyway. I just wanted to say, in conjunction with the stand-up for transit, we are providing free rides on Thursday for all CAT-Links riders, just to support the idea that transit is an important piece of what we do here in Cottonwood, and in conjunction with Verde Links, so we are providing...
So, great. So, because our television audience may be watching this at a later date, everybody should know that this Thursday?
This Thursday.
Which is April?
Ninth.
April 9th. There will be, all riders, all rides will be free on Thursday.
For all CAT and Links.
For CAT and Links customers.
Absolutely.
Or riders. Maybe it might be a first rider that's a new customer.
It might be a first rider. We encourage that.
Okay.
And hopefully we'll get some first riders.
Excellent.
It's one of the things that we try to encourage.
Mm-hmm.
So, moving on from that, one of the things that I wanted to try and do tonight is just kind of give you an idea of where we're at as far as where CAT and Links has been and where we're at now. When I got here in 2012, it was kind of a state of chaos, coming in from NATA and moving into the city, taking over the transit and everything else. We've, we've moved a long way from there. When we first, the end of that first fiscal year, we had transported about 112,000 riders. As of today, I did the statistics today, at the end of March, we had transported 100 and 11,000 riders at the end of March, and we've still got three months to go.
That's a lot.
For CAT and Links. So, we are progressing quite well. I think a lot of that has to do with some of the changes that, that you folks encouraged me to do, the senior fairs and the student fairs that you agreed were a good idea, have helped increase ridership. Seniors are taking advantage of it, so are the students. I think that's been a great idea, and everybody's enjoying it. The change that we made to the routes, with the green route being primarily for all our retail businesses going through Old Town and out to Walmart, those changes have been very, very beneficial. When I look at the statistics for our two biggest routes, the green route and the yellow route, which cover most of our retail businesses, that's where we pick up most of our riders, are those two primary routes. ADA, our paratransit has grown. We're averaging over 1,000 rides a month on paratransit now. CAT, by itself, is averaging over 6,000 riders a month. Links is getting back up there to almost 6,000 riders a month.
Wow.
So, we're doing very well. If we continue on the route, the pace that we're going right now, we will reach almost 160,000 riders by the end of, end of the fiscal year.
Wow, 160,000?
160,000.
Congratulations.
So, we're, we're doing quite well, and it's because of your support, and we appreciate that. It's really pretty amazing, when I look at the size of our area and the fact that we have such great ridership, it's all in, in the support that the city council has given us, and the Sedona City Council, the town of Clarkdale has supported us, and the county has supported us, and we appreciate all of that. And thanks to the grant from ADOT and FTA, we continue to be able to support the community in providing transit services. So, that's kind of a brief overview of where we've been and where we're at right now.
Certainly adds to the quality of life for the residents of the Upper Verde Valley, and over to the Yavapai Apache Nation now, and Camp Verde even.
Well, and to that end, some of the things that we're looking at for the future, we are looking at potential of connecting up with Cornville, and a fixed route going into Cornville would be beneficial for a lot of reasons. Extending the links down to the Village of Oak Creek is also another thing that's in the plan. In fact, next week I go over to Sedona to talk to them about that. Mostly it's, we're proposing it to help with their traffic issues in Uptown. A lot of that is coming up 179 into the Uptown area. A lot of people are using it to get through into the Oak Creek Canyon. There was a nice study that was done by US Forest Service, NATA, and Sedona, a couple of, well, it's been almost a year and a half ago now, that said transit can help provide some of the alleviation of that traffic congestion if we do it properly. So, one of the things we're going to look at is how can we help them alleviate the traffic by providing transit from the Forest Service station just south of the Village of Oak Creek on up into Oak Creek Canyon. So, that's one of the things we're going to be looking at.
Now, that highway really doesn't have any capacity at all.
It was, a lot of people, including ADOT, I think if they wanted to really admit it, have said that it was very, it's very beautiful, but it's poorly planned as far as moving traffic, so.
Yeah, they did what the local people wanted.
Yeah.
At the time.
The, the nice thing about it is they did provide ways for transit to be able to operate it down there, and they do have cutouts in the plan for us to be able to provide bus stops along the way, so in that respect, they did a pretty good job in that, so.
Where would people park?
Well, that's one of the issues we're going to...
That you're discussing. And no, no solution yet.
No solutions, but, but we have ideas.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's kind of one of the things that we're going to be talking about, is, you know, mayor making a big parking lot south of the VOC and provide transit to and from.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it could work, if we can find the money.
Right.
So, that gets back to the grant.
Right, the grant. I think it just speaks well of Cottonwood's ability to work in a regional manner and support the region and care about the region like we do, and I would like to thank fellow council members and city manager and Bruce for that kind of vision. Okay, so, any questions about this item for Bruce? And this is actually a public hearing, so we've had the explanation, and we're going to go ahead and open the floor to the public and have a hearing on this question. Public hearing regarding the city's intent to apply for grant funding for the CAT-Links transit program through the FTA dot Section 5311 Rural Transit Program. So, members of the public, any comments? If not, I'll sit down, Tom.
Hold him down, okay?
For members of the television audience, he's our water resources director. So, in all due respect to members of our public, we will close the floor to the public and close the hearing. And I would entertain a motion.
But I dare say this may be a no-brainer.
Yes.
In deference to our...
Our missing member.
Our missing compatriot. So, I think this will be moving to authorize staff to apply for Section 5311 Federal Transportation Authority funding through the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, for the operation of the Cottonwood Area Transit, Verde Links Transit System during the 2015-2016 federal budget cycle from October 1st, 2015 through September 30th, 2016.
Mr. Dowling made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Item Number Four, Approval of the Submission of a Section 5311 Arizona Department of Transportation Grant Application for Funding, The Operations of the Cottonwood Area Transit...
I think I did that.
To read the resolution? No.
A resolution.
It's no resolution. It's, so what is wrong?
What's he waiting for?
Move on to number five.
I'm not done reading this item yet. I'm almost done. The Operations of the Cottonwood Area Transit, Verde Links Public Transportation System in the 2015-16 federal fiscal, fiscal year.
Please do.
Okay, so we're ready to, any comments from the public on this? Okay, so I would entertain another motion from Mr. Dowling?
I just read that.
You did it, you did that one. Okay, so, sorry about that. That's why it was so long.
One of the, I think the previous one was just an informational session.
It was the hearing, right, okay. So, Mr. Dowling, okay, we already did that, so...
Number five.
We are on number five, but first we will do Resolution Number 2792. Did you read that? I'm missing out on an item here, so both of those are covered.
Yeah.
Okay, approval of, you can tell I've been up since 5:00 this morning. It's like, wow. It has been. Approval of the submission of, oops, we did that. Five, Approval of the Proposed Building Community Grant Program. So, we're gonna make the citizens sit here? Okay, we're good. Thank you, Rudy. You're awesome. Okay, so we have citizens that are just like, you know, their eyes look so tired. Now you, now you know what it's like to sit all night in a city council meeting, right? You can commiserate. Okay, so we're going to move up to Use of Conservation Funds to Fund the Second Annual Water Conservation Video Contest and the Water Conservation Education Program for an additional two-year period. So, see, tonight's hard work may lead into two years where you won't have to do this. Hi.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it gives me great pleasure to come before you tonight to seek your approval for use of conservation funds for the continuation of the K-8 Water Conservation Education Program. If you recall, it was almost two years ago that you guys were the first city of any city in the state of Arizona to actually authorize and implement a water conservation education program that encompassed all K-8 grades here in Cottonwood. For that, you should be commended, and it was followed thereafter, very shortly, by Clarkdale authorizing the same thing. So, here in the Verde Valley, we've got two communities here that are the only two communities in the state that have a K-8 water conservation program.
Yay!
Yes, and it's all because of you. And the Verde NRCD Education Center.
And a team, including you and other others.
Before I actually ask for your approval, with your permission, I would like to ask Linda Zanoli from the Verde NRCD Education Center to come up here and kind of talk about some of the successes we saw over the last couple of years, and some of the feedback from the teachers and students that she's experienced over the last two years. Okay?
Did they say yes?
Yes, absolutely. We're very, we're very excited about the work that you do.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting me have the stand. For a few short minutes, I would like to recognize with me that we have our chairperson from the NRCD Supervisors, Jody Allen is here tonight.
Hi, Jody.
And also, my clerk is here, Jeannie Robertson, to show their support.
And we love her emails. She keeps us apprised of what's happening with the program.
Yes, she's very busy, very, very busy. I'm the Ed Center Director, and the Ed Center, I have brochures if you just want to take one and pass it around. I'll give you a quick briefing of what we do. We offer free water education programs through the Cottonwood Kids Concerned K-8 Program. We offer free water education programs through the Cottonwood Kids Conserv K-eight Program. It's students in the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, and that includes Dr. Daniel Bright, Cottonwood Elementary School, Cottonwood Middle School, Mountain View Prep, and Oak Creek School. The Cottonwood Kids Conserv is based on four essential questions, and those four essential questions are aligned to the next generation's science standards. The four essential questions are, where is water found on earth? How does water get into and out of homes? Why is it important to save and not waste water? And how can we conserve water? The goal of the Cottonwood Kids Conserv Program is to create an educated group of future water stewards about the importance of using water wisely. Part of this program is a quarterly newsletter that I send out every quarter. I have this year's newsletters. They are, the newsletters are sent out electronically through the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, and every quarter, one over, I think it's one thousand two hundred and some odd number of these newsletters are set up, sent out to the parents of the, of Cottonwood Oak Creek School District. So, that was part of our outreach to the community. We've had a very successful first two years. We have seen over four thousand students in the K-four program and over two thousand students in the Water Stewardship Program, which is grades five through eight. We have been in every classroom and every school in the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District. We did a survey as part of the proposal, and the survey comments, I'd like to share some of them with you. These are from the teachers who, whose classrooms participated. One teacher said, "This is a great program. The kids love hearing another teacher talk, especially in an area where many classroom teachers lack knowledge." Thank you very much. Someone else said, "This is a great program." One teacher said, "I wish that this could go on all year because I only teach science once a week as it is." Would be very helpful, it would be very helpful, and the students would greatly benefit from it. The last one I want to read is, "I love this trip." So, they were referring to one of our field trips, and it said, "The kids are engaged throughout and come back excited." So, those are some of the comments from the teachers who responded to the survey. I have an activity, but it's late. Are you guys up for an activity? This is a second grade activity.
Let's do it, you did it to us last time, didn't you?
I gave you, I gave you a different activity, but I did share an activity...
Councilmember Ilinski is up for it, let's do it.
Sure.
Sure. All right. Well, this activity that I'm going to share with you tonight answers the essential question of how does water get into and out of our homes? Now, as part of the program, the students have booklets, and I'll just kind of put these randomly, randomly around here, and you can kind of share. The page, on the front cover of the booklet is the grade level, and then the page marked is the reading for information that the students would read.
What does grade four?
Grade four.
It's a two.
The activity I'm going to do for you is grade two, but thank you for paying attention. I appreciate that.
Boy, she's good, isn't she? She knows exactly how to respond.
That's right. So, like I said, this is a second grade activity, and it's how does water get into and out of our homes? So, I'm going to give each of you a storyboard, and on this, or Jeannie is...
Pass them to her, share.
And on the storyboard, we're going to stop about, we're going to talk about where water stops along its journey. You follow directions so well, this is encouraging.
We're good.
Should I start poking them or something?
Yeah.
I'm not touching you.
This is a test, remember it's second grade.
This is second grade. All right. So, on your storyboards, and I have it also here on the back of my notes, all the water that comes into our houses starts deep underground as groundwater. A well pumps the water up from under the ground to the earth's surface. So, if everyone could find this picture on your storyboard and put one of these light blue beads on that picture to represent the groundwater as it comes up out of the well.
This is getting very complicated. If you don't want to liven it up, just throw us the beads.
We were going to pass them out, but then we didn't want to get in the way of the camera, so we're putting you guys to work. After the water leaves the well, the next stop is the water treatment plant, and that is this picture on your storyboards. At the water treatment plant, the water is placed in a tank for disinfectant to take place. Now, you are second graders, so we need to talk about what disinfectant does. What that means is that it takes all the germs out of the water, so it is safe for us to drink. The water then, so please put one of these shiny sparkly beads on the second stop, which is the water treatment plant, to represent that the water is clean and it's ready to be used in our home.
Kyla.
So, as you're passing these...
Kyla, how about a photo of the council being...
Quiz.
Quiz for, for Rudy's, Rudy's Facebook page, since he has to wait.
So, as you're doing these beads, can you think, can you raise your, tell me some different ways that we use this water in our homes? Council?
The tree...
Busy putting beads.
Brush your teeth, very good.
Shower.
Shower, excellent.
Drink.
Drink.
Wash clothes.
Wash clothes.
Water gardens.
These are just a few of the ways that we use that water in our homes. So, now the water, when the water leaves our homes, this water is pretty dirty because it's either been flushed down the toilet or put down the sink. So, the next picture...
Thank you, Kyla.
Is, the next, so this water is dirty when it leaves our homes, and we're going to represent that by a gray bead. So, please put this gray bead where it says the wastewater leaving our home, because that water is, is been dirty, it's been flushed down the toilet, and they always giggle when I say that. So, the next stop for this water, after, after this water leaves our house, is the wastewater treatment plant. At the wastewater treatment plant, the water is, the water flows through many different filters and tanks to remove all the germs. This water then can be used in construction to keep the dust down or to water the plants, and this is with a dark blue beads, and we emphasize at this point that we do not use this water on agricultural plants, that it's mostly used in golf courses. Says we always have someone ask about that, part of it. So, now that you have all the beads represented, yes?
Can you ever mention what a shame it is that it's being used on golf courses?
And that's, that's actually temporary. If you vision into the future, it will have a lot more uses than that.
Oh, yes, it will, and I'm personally aware of that.
We're doing agriculture with it.
Yeah. So, now my question, that we have all these beads and water, different types of water, how, how are all of these, how is all this water connected? How does the water get from the well to our house? How does the water get from the house to the treatment plant?
An aging infrastructure system that desperately needs helping attention.
The overachiever, once again, thank you very much. And if we put that in second grade terms, it would be what?
It's like, it's recycled. I mean, the one percent that's available to humans, to, and animals to drink, or the, one to three percent, I, you know, it's, it goes in and it comes out, and it's used...
How does it go in and come out?
In pipes.
In pipes, yes.
Thank you very much. So, right now, you are receiving pipes, so as part of your activity, would you please line up the pipes that connect the different stops that water makes at each of the stops along its journey? And yes, you all have to do this?
Pardon?
I'll share when you're done.
Okay, you, let's share now. So, we're connecting, these are pipes?
Those are pipes.
Okay.
This hasn't been engineered yet.
Second graders, second graders, they're second graders.
Tom, I hope you, you're paying attention because she's setting the bar really high for your future presentations.
I heard.
Oh, yeah, we have one for you, Tom.
Oh, she's got hers across the top.
I'm following the directions.
I put them on the picture.
Okay, you're all doing very well. Excellent, thank you for following directions.
Oh, they, I see the lines there.
The lines are there, but yours are just fine. We have special accommodations.
Special needs, huh? I'm the special needs, yes.
I don't want them to roll away.
No, we can't have any of those pipes rolling away.
They didn't break one.
We're all loved equally.
The end of its hundred year lifespan.
All right, I know you're enjoying putting the pipes together, but there's one thing missing from this board that you have. What goes through those pipes?
Water.
Water. So, now, we have water.
Oh.
So, you, your next assignment is to start at the well water and have the water flow through each location.
I have corroded pipes.
Your pipes are corroded. Talk to, talk to somebody over there that works in town.
It comes with age.
Ruder, ruder.
Are you doing one? Or do you do it?
Write a copy of it here. See how much fun this is that computer stuff?
Definitely.
So, now you put your water through the pipes.
If y'all want to see kids in action, go down to the park in October.
A project wet?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're so, it's so much fun to watch. Those kids are phenomenal.
And that is...
Just like a pass fail.
So, and then the students get to take home this bracelet when they're finished, and you also get to keep the bracelet when you're finished.
Remember our task.
You'll be on council table.
So, that is a second grade activity.
I'm not following directions. You're supposed to put that in.
Scarlet will love it.
Start at the well.
I'm going to give this around my shoulder.
There you go.
We can have two places.
I'm special.
Certainly, it's a pleasure.
Okay, so what do you need back, the book?
It's western leather, keeping the bracelet.
My beads are gonna float.
Those beads should be in the bracelet.
Oh.
To remind you where the water flows.
Okay. See how well I follow directions?
Ooh, you did it really, really smooth, Randy.
So, I suppose the second graders are pretty thrilled to get a bracelet.
There is your well water.
I have to say that I've worked on some of our stuff, like at McDonald's and out in the community, and I've actually had children see our logo and go, "You're one of the water ladies."
Oh, really?
And then they tell me whatever, you know...
They remember, right.
Yeah, they'll remember, or I'll ask them, "What do you remember from, from the class?" And they'll tell me, it's a lot of fun. I just, I don't like to be in the classroom, so.
All right.
Any questions?
Questions.
For me?
Thank you for the exercise.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
We're good sports.
Yeah, it, there's always the big question of, does this really work? I mean, does it's really setting in with the kids or they getting it? And, and I have to tell you, you know, I'm a guest lecturer up at NAU every semester in a sustainability class, and the first question I always ask all the students is the million dollar question, where's your water come from? And I do this because many, many years ago, prior to making a presentation, I went into my neighborhood in Phoenix and asked, oh, fifty or sixty neighbors where their water comes from, and of course, the number one answer was the faucet overwhelmingly. So, I always ask that question as I'm up there at NAU when I start my lecture, and the number one answer is...
A faucet?
I would have thought it was a faucet, but it's, I don't know.
Oh, no.
So, and I, I tell you this simply because at the recent SciTech Festival, now we had not a great turnout at, at the, at our event, but the few people that we had, it was rather interesting, because I'm asking these little kids, where's their water come from? And I would say probably forty to fifty percent of them actually could tell me that it starts with the rain, it rains on the mountain, and it goes into the ground, and then we pump it out with a well. And I was like, who is your parents? You know, we learned it at school. So, I, it is setting in to some, to some degree or another, and I think with it being K through eighth, and being we've gone through two years of this now, you know, the kids are starting out in kindergarten, by the time they get to eighth grade, I think it will have a tremendous impact in their overall lives and in water use here in the valley. There'd be a greater respect for, for water itself.
Absolutely.
That's why I think it's very important that we as a community continue this program, because I think, over time, I think we're going to see it make a tremendous difference in terms of our actual water use.
So, you make contact with each classroom for one day out of the school year? Is that how it goes?
Grades K through four, we're in contact with them four days out of the year. Grades five through eight, it's two days in the classroom and a full day field trip.
And if those aren't consecutive days, do you space them out throughout the year?
Grades K four are not consecutive, they're once a quarter, and grades five, eight are consecutive, three days.
Is there any talk of, or any hope of expanding your presence?
There's talk, but...
It's a financial detail.
Well, it's not, not even financial, as much as it is, there's a curriculum that they've got to also maintain within the schools. If we can, I, I think we're gaining, gaining greater acceptance with what Lyndon and her people are doing within the school, though, and I think over time, you may see it expand. How much, I'm not quite sure, but I think even the little bit that we're getting today is, is tremendous, and it does set in because it's something out of the norm, and they do these little activities, it's very interactive, as opposed to just sitting there and being lectured to for the most part.
Right.
I think it really helps.
Yeah, there's always, I attended, I think, the first graders over at Dr. Daniel Bright, and I think I've done second or third grade.
I think we did third grade.
Yeah, third grade.
You haven't made it up to fourth or fifth grade.
I got it, yeah.
And everyone's invited to come to.
Get that done, yeah, everybody's invited. Council members can certainly stop in and, and participate.
So, what we're asking for tonight then is for your approval to continue this program for the next two years. The cost for the next two years is thirty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Segueing from that, we'd also like you to approve tonight continuation of the water conservation video contest at the high school. As you recall, last year, we had in excess of ten videos that were submitted by probably forty or fifty kids overall, and we anticipate that, that even being much larger this year. There was a tremendous amount of feedback that occurred as a result of that, and from what I'm getting from the, the head of the department over there, people are really, the, the kids are really looking forward to it. We were, almost weren't going to do it because we couldn't find a venue that we thought would be sat, you know, satisfactory for the, to actually show these at, and then, of course, as you heard earlier from Juliana, this movie in the park thing, this was an idea that we tried to do last year, but the recreation center was, they're, they were understaffed, didn't have the resources to actually do one more event over and above what they were currently doing, and so this kind of, you know, blends into really well. Juliana was really excited about it. It would give us an opportunity to actually spotlight at least the top four or five out of how many of them that are submitted, and we anticipate that it could be a pretty nice thing, and then, of course, it's always been shown on access cable for a month following after we select the winners.
Will it be more difficult now that the students will be leaving class in May? Will you do it before May, or how will you do it?
Well, the, the event here in, in Cottonwood, I think... Well, uh, the, the event here in, in Cottonwood, I think, is May sixteenth, so they're still in, in school at that point in time.
Okay.
Which works out really well for us. I mean, you know-
I really like having the high school having a curriculum or something to do because then that means that we're doing something for K through twelve. And that's important to include all age groups, in my opinion.
Yeah. And that, that would be an additional nine hundred dollars for the prize money for that at a contest.
And one of the young winners from last year saw me somewhere in town, and he says, "Do you remember me?" And he says, "You know, the videos." So, it's, they remember, you know, it means something to them.
They do. So, the total amount would be, was it, uh, thirty-three thousand, forty-five dollars for the two events?
Mr. Garrison?
Um, I was contacted by Barbie Aran, uh, the superintendent for Cottonwood Oak Creek School District. She had expressed her, uh, she wanted to be here tonight. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it, but she did want to, uh, express her overwhelming support for your program and, and the educational opportunity it's provided the children in Cottonwood Oak Creek Ed, uh, elementary schools.
Thank you. Glad you got, was able to get ahold of you. She very much supports the program.
And it's nice to be able, even to get into a school is amazing, to be given the time to do this. I mean, probably doesn't happen in too many schools, so we appreciate her support also.
Absolutely.
And having great grandchildren in these elementary schools, I, when they bring these things to me, I act like I've never seen them. I let, I let them explain them to me. They are learning a lot from the information that we're giving them.
So, I, I approve and support the rest of the council.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there anybody from, um, from our audience who would like to speak? Jody, would you like to share a few words? Miss, Miss, Miss Allen?
No, I didn't. Of course, I'm not prepared to say anything, however-
If you wanna come up to the lectern, otherwise you won't be able to be heard in television land.
Well, um, we're thrilled to have Linda on our board, or not on our board, but as our ed center director. But what is really encouraging is to see the numbers on how many people that she actually sees eye to eye. And, um, when we go to places and, um, we do things, Verde River Days and things like that, and they, they spot, they spot Linda and they, "Oh, hi," you know, and these kids are so into it. And it gives them an opportunity to learn about the water and whatnot. But getting these kids on the river is really important. And, um, Linda had some kind of a, a question and answer with the kids at one time. And there was such a small amount of our Cottonwood kids, and Camp Verde too, of our kids that have actually been to the river before. And you'd think that would be, you know, a no-brainer that we live here and that they'd be here. But, you know, we, that's the world that we live in, you know, a single family, family homes or whatever.
People are busy, yeah.
So, it offers them a, an opportunity like that, and that's near and dear to my heart, so.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate you guys' support, um, so much with all of the kids that you helped this, uh, happen. So, thank you all, and it's really lovely.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have you been, viewer have been to the wastewater treatment plant?
It's, that's not Debbie's fault, though, 'cause she sure tries to get them there.
But that's one of the, that's one of their-
That's one of their, what they do, one of-
All the, all the eighth graders.
Okay, great. And they love that stuff.
They do. Very sticky.
Yes. Okay, so, any, any more comments from the public? If not, I would entertain a motion, and Mr. Dowling has his pen up.
I, I move to approve the use of thirty-three thousand and forty-five dollars from the Conservation Fund to fund the second annual water conservation video contest and the next two years of the water conservation education program for grades K through eight.
Second.
So, Mr. Dowling made the motion, and Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for spending the evening with us.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Keep up the great work. And here's our martyr, Mr. Rudy Rodriguez. He let, he let you all go in ahead of him, so.
Rudy, I'll send you more pictures.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item is approval of proposed building community grant program and program documents, release of grant applications and authorization to release grant funds as budgeted for year 2015.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, this is something we've been trying to do for a number of years. Some of you that were around back in two thousand seven, this program was initiated back then, um, by our former city manager, Brian Mickelson. And shortly afterwards, uh, it died because of our great recession. And since when, we've been trying to recover. Um, the economy, as we've discussed in our strategic plan meeting, is not fully, has not fully recovered. However, um, we got to a point where we, we talked at our, our last year's budget sessions that we need to do something for our local community because there are a lot of needs, uh, in Cottonwood. And one of them was to bring back the building, building better community grants or building community grant program. Um, this program, what we're asking for today, uh, you have attached the, the policy procedures and the grant applica, or the applications that would be, uh, used for this particular program. Um, and we're asking council to allow us to use what we budgeted, which was fifteen thousand dollars, to put this program out there for, uh, five oh one C threes, uh, to compete for the, uh, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, if you look at the program itself, where we're running a little bit later than we anticipated, traditionally, we would come in January to our councils and give you a report as to how well our revenues are doing. And if we're right on, right on target or close to it, then we move forward with the program. Um, in order to expedite this and get it done before the end of the fiscal year, we will be asking for, um, the council to put together a, a committee. And that committee, and let me pull it up because I had it in front of me, and I just misplaced it, uh, consists of several members. And one of them would be a, one of the council members, uh, and one from several other organizations throughout the, throughout the, uh, city. Uh, let me see, I, I had it in front of me and I-
So, it was two citizens, a, a, one from each board, planning and zoning?
Yeah, one from the planning commission, one from a park commission, a library board, one city staff member, and then two citizens at large. And this, this group will go ahead and evaluate the applications, make a decision, uh, make a recommendation for how much funding they should get, and then bring it before council and get it approved. Now, there are reporting requirements, uh, on this. And much like our, all of our other, uh, line item, uh, organizations that we fund every year, uh, they're required to report to us, and if they don't, then they go ahead and lose their funding. So, we do, we, we try to get strict on that because we do mean to make sure that they are doing the project that they actually propose on these procedures, on these, on these applications. Um, if anyone has any questions, I'll be more than happy to, to try to answer them. But pretty much, I think it's fairly cut and dry. There's, there's procedures, there's an application. Um, and then there's, of course, an agreement that the organizations have to sign with us stating what their project is and also how they're gonna be reporting to us.
I'd just say, I think it's a- It's a long time coming. I know we've been trying to get this, um, program organized a little better, and I think this accomplishes that. Glad to see it. I'm glad to see there's going to be committee, too, to review all these applications.
And I think the membership of the committee is excellent. You got to be a broad-based committee.
Uh, if council would, would like to, at least for today, at least appoint a, a, one council member, we can go ahead and, I think administratively, we can pick the rest of the members from the, from the other committees if that'd be fine with them.
Is there someone that would like to volunteer for the committee?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, Tim's, is that okay with everyone?
Okay.
How, excuse me, um, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
Just curious how the two citizens at large, will staff also select those?
Um, if you have someone you'd like, the, the whole, I'm trying to go ahead and expedite it.
Understand.
I don't wanna spend more and more, you know, another three or four weeks trying to get someone on there. Um, we can, we can go ahead and probably select some, some members from the community, from the community.
Just seems like every time, and I don't mean any disrespect, but seems like every time we select someone from the community, it winds up being Jake Gonzalez and, and Ed Kiler. So, I'm just wondering if there's, you know, if council could try to petition some other community members, you know?
If someone, I, I think if, if you have someone that you might be interested, you can go ahead and forward them to us. The reason we pick on people such as Jake and, and, is because they're always, they're always willing, they're always out there, they have no problem.
They show up.
They have schedule, they show up. Um, that's why, that's why, and they're, they're, and they're good, um, you know, they're good citizens, and they've always done a good job for us.
I'm not questioning their integrity or their willingness to serve. I'm not questioning that.
No, not at all. But if council has, uh, some, some suggestions, if someone they'd like to be on that, on that particular committee, you know, send them over to us, and administratively, we can go ahead and, and go from there if, if council would want us to.
So, I would say if you have someone you'd like to suggest, get that to Rudy by tomorrow at five.
Yes.
And if they don't hear from us, then they will go ahead and choose citizens from within their own contacts and-
Did you say tomorrow by five? I'm sorry.
Yes, tomorrow by five. Get her done. So, we can move forward. Okay, um, so, policy, we're kind of creating a little bit of, it's a little bit different than it used to be, the committee makeup, but it's pretty much the same.
It's pretty much the same as it was. Um, you know, I, I think the, uh, those of, of council members that have been here for a number of years, uh, remember this policy.
Yeah.
I guess vaguely, since it's been about eight years or so.
I remember when we created it.
So-
It was very exciting. So, any more comments? Any comments from the public? If not, I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the building community grant program and program documents, direct staff to release the applications and authorize the funding of the program up to fifteen thousand dollars in the current fiscal year as budgeted.
Second.
Okay, and so, the discussion there, um, so the vice mayor made the motion, council member Dowling seconded it. And I forgot what I was gonna bring up. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The night is, is wearing on. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Okay, um, the next item is review and approval, um, for the city council's 2015 strategic plan. And this is something we spent many hours on, and, and now it, we're ready to get it to a point where staff can start, uh, trying to implement some of the council's, um, goals for the coming year. And as a city manager, were you just waiting for us pretty much to say yea or nay?
Madam Mayor, council members, um, the, this is the result of the beating on January twenty-ninth, when the council got together, uh, and gave staff direction in terms of, uh, strategic init, initiatives for this next year. Some of these are probably gonna be multi-year kind of initiatives, uh, which I think the council understands. I sent this out to the council, uh, it's been out to the department heads to get their feedback. Um, I got, uh, very little feedback from, uh, either party. So, my assumption is it's-
We're good to go.
Ready for council approval. Although if the council has anything they'd like to add, change, delete, we can certainly go back and do that as well.
One thing that I might add that was, is something new since the council met was the, um, and it's, it is still coming, it is coming soon, I believe, to the agenda, is the Veterans Memorial.
It's, it's on-
Is it? Okay. So, we've got that. So, we're good. That's the only thing that I was concerned about. Which strategy is that under?
Eight.
Eight? Social services. Okay, it's not spec, oh, yeah, participants for the veterans part. Great. I, oh, I remember what my question was. We had talked about taking five thousand of this fifteen and, and paying our bill on the National Geographic, but I'm assuming we're gonna do the whole fifteen for this and figure out where to get that somewhere else. Okay, that's good. Did you have something else, another question?
Was just gonna make a motion if you were ready.
Yeah.
I move to approve the city council's 2015 strategic initiatives.
Second.
So, Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Mr. Garrison seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you, city manager. And then, now that it's approved, he'll start putting in his dates and assigning people to do things, and council may have some assignments, too. Claims and adjustments?
Move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Mr. Garrison made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?